Good evening and welcome. I would like to call the annual organizational meeting of the Monroe Woodbury Central School District to order Tuesday, July 5th at the Education Center. Please rise for the pledge.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Before we move on, I'd like to mention that Mr. Beeler has joined us remotely and will be voting remotely and possibly Mr. Siriello, although I don't believe he's on as yet.
He's not on yet.
At this time, I would like to administer the oath to our newly elected and reelected board members. These, that would be Suzanne Donahue, Stacy McLeary, and Jeffrey Reynolds. Please take your paper that I left to read your oath, stand and raise your right hand.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties as an officer of the Office of Board of Education of the Monroe Woodbury Central School District according to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you, congratulations. At this time, the floor is now open for nominations for the Office of President of the Board of Education. Are there any nominations?
I nominate Michael Siriello for president.
Okay.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Is there any discussion? May I please have a motion to close nominations and elect Mr. Siriello as President of the Board of Education?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it has, any opposed?
I abstain.
Okay. Motion carries. Michael Siriello has been nominated as the President of the Monroe Woodbury Central School District for the 2022-2023 school year. At this time, I do not believe Mr. Siriello is on.
No.
No, so he will have to, we will have to administer the oath of office at a later We will move on to the Vice Presi-, yeah, I'm sorry, the nomination for the Office of Vice President of the Board of Education. Are there any nominations?
I nominate Jamelle Evans. Second.
Are there any other nominations? Is there any discussion? Well, thank you. May I please have a motion to close nomination and elect Jamelle Evans as Vice President of the Board of Education?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Or abstained? Motion carries. Jamelle Evans has been nominated and as the President, as the Vice President of the Monroe Woodbury Central School District for the 2022-2023 school year. Congratulations. At this time, we will administer the oath for the Vice President. Please raise your right hand and read the oath.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Board Vice President of the Monroe Woodbury Central School District according to the best of my ability.
Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr., yeah, Jamelle, you now preside over the meeting in the absence of Mr. Siriello.
I gotta move everything.
Yes.
Now I'm taking my water.
Yep. And your nameplate. I should note, I don't think I mentioned, although I did say that Mr. Beeler was joining remotely, I am supposed to state where he is located. He's currently located at 327 Corus Winds Drive in Palm Harbor, Florida. Okay, so. Now you probably move.
I'm just gonna go to Jenna's seat.
And you are here.
This is overall very ineffective, so I'm sorry for everyone else, it's like, what's going on? I'm with you, so.
I might feel a little, he doesn't get it.
I'm fine, thank you.
Okay. Or you do the district.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes.
If you could administer about district clerk.
Yep.
Remember you're not this one.
I know, I know. So if you wanna stand up.
Do you have a copy of these, Jamelle?
Oh my.
You can say, I have to do it, yeah.
Okay, good, alright, good, I'll read that.
So I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of District Clerk of the Monroe Woodbury Central School District according to the best of my ability. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm next. Yes, because I don't believe Jenna, is Jenna on?
She is on.
So let's get Jenna then. Okay. Does she have her paper? She does not. So do you have her paper?
She can repeat after me maybe?
So you're gonna read this to her, because Jenna cannot hear.
Okay.
So you're just gonna, she'll, I mean, she can't read this and she could, but it's gonna be a little hard, so you just change this to student V O E rep.
You wanna hand it to me and I can put it on the camera so she can.
Oh, good. Except not superintendent V O E rep.
Jen, I'm gonna show my screen and I'm gonna show you the oath of office. Can you see that?
Yes. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Superintendent of Schools of the Monroe Woodbury.
So we just gave you the motion, good job. You're gonna be the opposite, we're gonna be Student Board of Education, okay? Alright, let's, let's, hold on.
Awesome.
Okay, should I say it again? I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Student Representative of the Monroe Woodbury Central School District according to the best of my ability.
Awesome. Congratulations. Welcome. We've been past one.
Sorry?
We've been past this, we need to point, you know, have a motion to approve school officials.
Alright.
And then.
Ooh, cheat sheets. Good to have. Alright, um.
And a motion to.
Have a motion to appoint, uh, school officials?
Vote. Second.
Any discussion?
Any discussion? I did a gavel thing.
No, you don't.
Oh, come on. In discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Here, sit this. And now we're gonna, uh, Student Representative, next. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Superintendent of Schools of the Monroe Woodbury Central School District according to the best of my abilities. Are we gonna end this meeting?
Alright. Now she said I can end the meeting. Alright. Do we have a motion to end the meeting or do we?
Wait, 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 one second, because I think. Other appointments.
Oh.
Other appointments. So motion to approve the following appointments.
Oh, it's continued on the back page.
Motion to approve the following appointments.
Motion to approve the following appointments? That same amount?
Item 3.11.
Item 3.11.
Uh huh. Um.
Motion?
Motion?
Motion. Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Yep. Motion passes.
And the next? Special Education and Partial Hearing Officers.
Motion to appoint Special Education and Partial Hearing Officers?
Motion. Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Alright, motion pass. Motion to approve official depositories for funds?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion for approval of authorizations?
Motion. Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion for approval of policies?
Motion.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
This time we'll adjourn.
Gonna make a motion.
Motion? She cheated us out that way.
Uh, motion. Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright.
There's a mission statement we normally read. Do we have that? It's written.
Oh, thank you. Reading of the mission statement. We are committed to academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment. In partnership with families in our community, our mission mode of confidence inspire a passion for learning and to prepare our students to become responsible global citizens.
Thank you. I need motion to approve the revised agenda.
Motion to approve the revised.
Motion. Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yeah. This time we'll ask for any questions or comments from concerned citizens?
No.
Okay. Uh, policy?
Yes.
Updates?
It's just the first reading.
Okay.
Just a motion to approve the first reading.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Which policies they are?
Yes, sir. Policy number 6111, anti-nepotism and conflict of interest arising from family relationships.
And policy 8131.
And policy 8131 for equity.
Motion to.
Motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion for approval of the Board of Education Committees?
Motion. I think we need to table that, done with the new president coming in.
Why?
So he can choose who goes on the committees and have bearing on who goes on the committees?
We discussed it at a workshop.
Excuse me?
We discussed it at a working session at a workshop. It wasn't as if I dictated them beforehand.
Yes, so.
Let's table it for now, let Mike decide. We're not gonna.
That's what I'm asking, Mike is the president now, I have a discussion about it.
I had no opposition. I'm just saying that we discussed it previously at a working session and it was discussed then.
Alright, motion to table? Can I make a motion to table the committees?
Second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Alright, motion table.
Approval of the professional learning plan. Motion to.
Motion for approval of the professional learning plan for 2022 to 2023?
Motion.
Second.
Um, I do have a question. So through it, it makes reference to the eye-opening enterprises. I've yet to approve them for the next school year. I know that at a previous meeting, we had discussed getting some data and feedback as to how they're, have they impacted the district over the past two years. Does approving this professional learning plan today have any direct impact on if we continue eye-opening or if we decide to choose another vendor to take over in their spot?
Sure, so basically what happens, a variety of different things happen with regards to the development of the professional learning plan. One of them is, we have to include the chart, I think what you're referring to is, the chart at the end of the professional learning plan has to list all of the various providers that we anticipate using in the following school year. The reason why it needs to do that is because staff with certain certifications are required to do a certain professional development hours in order to maintain certification. And the professional learning plan has to be submitted to the State Ed Department. In order for those hours to count, the providers have to be listed within our professional learning plan. We're not required to use them, if it ends up that, we don't use them, it's, you know, it doesn't make a difference in terms of our obligation in order to be able to use a particular vendor. It's just that if we anticipate using them or there's a possibility they were in last year's plan, in order for those professional development hours to count towards their certification, they have to be listed in the plan.
So approving it just allows staff to, these are the CLT hours?
Correct, C T L E hours, correct.
That's something I don't have to.
That is exactly right.
So it just allows them to continue accumulating hours, whether we choose to use any, all sum of the vendors listed in it, it's completely, it's based on what we decide as a, as a group.
Correct, so one of the things that we do in the development of the plan is, I send that chart out to the administrators and I say to them, please add or delete any providers that we don't plan on using anymore or that we anticipate using or, you know, we might be exploring somebody new. They're not on there, then we don't have the ability to be able to count those hours. So we need to put everything on there that we think is a possibility that may be used. There's nothing. Us to be able to use one of those.
You could basically list everybody under the sun and then cut out 90% of them and.
That's exactly right.
The staff is covered for gate and those hours.
Correct, correct, yep.
As a related, the contract of eye-opening enterprises stand, as I know it, it was, it up in July, is that right?
I think it's through this, well, last year, technically June 30th of 2022.
Negotiated, but there are some hours that they owe us, you know, based on the contract. We'll come back and finish their hours, but we have not moved.
Data?
I believe that Dr. Hasler will be presenting some information, they're gonna be giving us information in August, because they did a survey. We did a presentation, I believe, in June. Then they'll be prepared with more data.
And receive the data from them for year two.
Correct.
Right.
But I think, if I'm not mistaken, we posted their last, their first year, year one, and now we're waiting on year two, we were told that we'll get it in August.
They haven't sent us the report yet.
The data is posted where?
The data.
Additional questions for discussion? Okay. We have to.
Yes, a motion to accept that.
Sorry, for which one?
For the, this one.
So motion for approval of the professional learning plan for 22-23 school year.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Guidance plan.
Discussion. Motion for approval of guidance plan for 2022-23 school year?
Vote.
Motion for approval of textbook?
Motion. Second. Although.
Excuse me?
Yes.
What textbooks are we?
So, no problem. Included, included in the board packet was information about the Ancient Civilizations textbook, which is an updated version of social studies textbook for the sixth grade curriculum, which includes the Eastern Hemisphere from Common Era all the way through 1450 BCE through 1450. This is an update to, and the old series is, even though it's ancient civilization, it, it.
It's really ancient.
Yes, correct. This, similar to all of the other recommendations that we've made to the board, comes with a six-year digital site license. Basically, it's a class set of physical copies and the students get a six-year subscription in order to be able to have access to it online, on their devices.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approval of minutes?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Personnel?
Thank you very much. I respectfully request approval for the item.
Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Can I make a request before we move on to business? We do have a number of people who are certified staff in the audience, we have a number of teachers, so if you were here and you were just approved, could you just stand up for one second and just let us know who you are? I know who you are, because I've already met all of you. Why don't we start with you, Ariel, in the.
Nice, you're making a mention of some sounds.
Hi, I'm Ariel Burrow. Hi, Bush. Recently worked at Monasello and, being at Monroe Woodbury.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Is that, yes.
Hi, my name is Sam, I'm from Middletown. Just graduated about a couple months ago and I'm excited to work.
It's gonna be music at Pine Tree.
Yes, for music.
Welcome.
Hi, my name is Danny Yober. I'm gonna be at North Main.
Hi, I'm Gina Martina. I'm going to be at North Main as well.
So, thank you very much, I appreciate you. We have a video as well, sorry.
Hi, my name is Richard Boyd. I'm from Hobbie's School of the High School.
Business and financial.
Yeah, thank you. So I would like to respectfully request approval of the items listed under the financial, business, financial section of the agenda, and I just, I take a moment to acknowledge and thank one of our employees at Smith Clove, Herve Patel, for a donation of AV and technology equipment. And I'd also like, just to point out to everyone, there was sort of a last-minute addition under the bid section of the agenda, and that is a recommendation to approve the Palumbo Group as our construction manager for the upcoming capital project and referendum on December 6th.
Motion?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Special Education.
Ah, okay. Motion for approval of committees on special education and preschool, special education?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Most time.
Alright, recent thesis.
Reports by board.
Reports by board and central office? Are we doing?
I don't have a report for Visitation Committee.
Next would be, I think, Don Diavolo would be for audit and facilities?
Uh, Don Diavolo for audit?
Uh, no, we didn't have a meeting, and we need to approve the contractor, the, for facilities as well, so that was, that was the thing.
And Stacy for policy?
Uh, policy, Stacy?
We just had the policies that were on this evening.
Okay, so good.
Still any other? Either we have the student V O E rep, or she wants to say something?
No, she has to log off.
She has to log off, okay. Okay, that's it.
We can. I guess not.
Did you just say reports by central board?
Yeah. And motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Well, if any, we typically offer to go around the room.
We can, it's a, that one thing, okay. Now, we'll start with Dawn, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
Come around the room? Statements, none?
I just want to say, graduation was amazing last week. Congratulations to our class of 2022 and hope everybody has a great summer.
I'd like to congratulate all our graduates. It was an awesome ceremony, beautiful evening for it. I'd also like to congratulate all our recent retirees and welcome our new staff and faculty. I hope you have a very successful career here at Monroe Woodbury and I'd like to wish everybody a wonderful summer.
Welcome to all new teammates coming to us. I appreciate you choosing Monroe Woodbury and look forward to serving with this great team.
I'd like to say thank you to Lori and the high school staff and all of the administration for the graduation. It was an exciting night and I got a lot of positive feedback from it, so I want to thank everybody for the hard work that went into that evening, it was really great. I want to welcome all the new hires, I wish them all the best and give a special welcome to Jenna, I know she unfortunately couldn't be here tonight, she is at Girl State, so we are hoping for some good results and then she will move on to Nationals, so that is why she wasn't able to be here tonight, but she'll be a great addition for our community.
Jump over to Erin.
Oh, it's Dawn.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dawn.
Oh, have a good summer, congratulations, a class of 22.
Just a quick thank you for the approval of the P L P plan and the guidance plan, those are annual approvals that need to happen, so certainly we appreciate that, that allows us to kind of get other, other things in place. Congratulations, congratulations to everybody who was hired this evening, you know, welcome aboard, we're excited to work with you, and just to echo what everybody else said, graduation was phenomenal, congra-, you know, congratulations and thank you to Lori and the entire high school team that pulled it together. It's a lot of moving parts of graduation, so thank you.
Yeah, I guess I'll also echo what everyone else has said, I'd like to specifically, though, thank the custodial, safety, and transportation staff who made a big contribution to graduation, it was a wonderful evening and success, and I just hope everyone has a nice evening.
And just to piggyback that, I think one of the most amazing things about graduation was the fact that we had people in seats that they've never sat in as far as the organization of graduation, they've never done the graduation before, Lori and a lot of other staff, and you could never, you couldn't tell that even a little bit. It was, it really was flawless, and that is, hopefully Lori, hopefully you were able to sleep well afterwards, because I know there was a lot of stressors that went along with that, but it really was great, congratulations to all the students and welcome to the new staff. It's been a pleasure to get to know you so far and I think we all look forward to continuing to get to know, to know you. Thanks.
Summer's disappearing way too fast. Everybody have a.
was the fact that we had people in seats that they've never sat in, as far as the organization of graduation. They've never done the graduation before, Lori and a lot of other staff, and you could never... You couldn't tell that even a little bit. It was... It really was flawless, and that is, hopefully, Lori, hopefully, you're able to sleep well afterwards, because I know there was a lot of stressors that went along with that, but it really was great. Congratulations to all the students, and welcome to the new staff. It's been a pleasure to get to know you so far, and I think we all look forward to continuing to get to know you. Thanks.
Summer's disappearing way too fast. Everybody have a great night.
Congratulations to the class of 2022. I wasn't able to attend, but I heard it was a beautiful ceremony, and congratulations to all the new hires tonight. Good luck, and I wish you well, and have a great summer, everyone.
Congratulations to all the new hires. I want to say goodbye to Mr. Misano. Do well. Good for you, and I want to also welcome Chris Berger, who will be... You approved him this evening. Chris will be the next middle school principal, so welcome. We will miss you, but thank you, Chris. And graduation was spectacular, so it was a wonderful evening. Thanks to everyone who made that a wonderful, memorable night. I'm so appreciative, and have a good summer. Enjoy it. It is going by quickly. We have like eight weeks left.
Only a teacher can feel that pain when it started.
Of course, congratulations to the graduates and the parents of the graduates and the families of the graduates, and congratulations to the faculty and staff that now gets, hopefully, a little bit of time off and relaxation. I have talked to Dan, and next year, there's not a chance that we're gonna be sitting up there wearing suits.
Holos.
Holos, or something that breathes. So looking forward to that already, and have a good summer.
Thank you. You need a motion.
Motion to adjourn meeting?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?